Everybody, my name is Matt O'Malley. I am the vice chair of the Boston City Council. And in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, this council is conducting our meeting remotely. Viewers can watch the council live on YouTube. They may also visit boston.gov/city-council-tv. I will now ask Madam Clerk to ascertain the presence of a quorum by please calling the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councillor Arroyo.
Present.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Bach.
Present.
Councillor Braden.
Present.
Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards.
Present.
Councillor Asabi George. Councillor Flaherty.
Here.
Councillor Flynn.
Here.
Councillor Janey. Councillor Mahia.
Here.
Councillor O'Malley.
Present.
And Councillor Wu.
Present.
And Councillor Asabi George.
Madam Clerk, it says connecting to audio for her account still.
Okay, thank you. We'll check back with her. Mr. Vice President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We do indeed have a quorum present, and I'm sure that Councillor Asabi George, it looks like she's having some better luck with her connectivity right now. Before we, so, Madam Clerk, would you just please note that Councillor Asabi George has joined us as well? Thank you.
Thank you.
And today, the invitation will be delivered by our own Clerk, Maureen Feeny. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. A prayer for community and transition. Loving God, thank you for the gift of family and community, for the life and love we share. We ask you to make us aware of your presence during this time of transition. Help us to know that we are not alone in life's comings and goings. Help us to accept change as an opportunity to grow in our trust and understanding of each other and you. Help us to refocus on who we are and what we are about. Remind us that change can bring new energy, new life, and a recommitment to all we hold sacred. Grant us the security of knowing we rest in the fullness of your care. May this period of transition be a time of transformation, allowing us to become all we are to be. Bless the members of the Boston City Council as they deliberate their work and the future of Boston and its people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for those inspiring words. I would now ask all those who are able to please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
A nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Of liberty.
And justice.
For our own.
Thank you again, Madam Clerk. Thank you, colleagues. Before we get to the business, there is one presentation that I am offering along with Councillor at large Denise Asabi George. This week marks School Social Workers Week across the country, and I am particularly honored that we get to recognize just an amazing public servant, Carmen Calderon O'Hara, who is the Program Director of Social Work at BPS. Carmen has served as a school counselor and social worker for nearly 25 years. And as we celebrate School Social Workers Week, we acknowledge just the vital role that they play. I also wanted to acknowledge everyone's favorite, O'Malley, my sister Christine O'Malley, who was a social worker at Madison Park Technical Vocational High School and really does some amazing work there. It's important that we take this opportunity to acknowledge the men and women who really fill this so crucial role, particularly now. I mean, this week marks the one-year period that our kids have been primarily working remotely. We are seeing more, thankfully, students returning to in-person learning. But just the incredible stress that we have all felt as adults, to think that these teens and adolescents have been dealing with, the need for support services that a social worker can provide, as it relates to just social and emotional wellness and health issues around just so many challenges that are happening right now in this body. And I wanted to acknowledge particularly the leadership of Councillor Denise Asabi George in making sure that we're able to have social workers in every school, and we're going to continue that leadership from this body. But just the stress that has been happening, it really shows how vital these services are and just how these individuals are just remarkable servants. So Carmen, on behalf of all of your colleagues, we are so grateful to you. We will further celebrate and recognize our school social workers this Thursday at 4:00 PM, where Councillor Asabi George will be holding a hearing to ensure that all BPS schools have full-time mental health and emotional and social supports going forward. As I told you earlier, typically, we would do these in the chamber, so I hope God willing to have you in the chamber, perhaps this summer or fall, where we can present you with this certificate, and all councillors can thank you and see how we can further support the great work that you and your colleagues, people like my sister, do each and every day. So Carmen, before we get to you, Councillor Asabi George, did you have any brief remarks to offer?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Christine and Carmen, who are with us today, for the work that you continue to do every day. As a Sister of a School Counselor in BPS, I know how hard you all work to support our kids, and I'm just grateful for your continued service, especially during this time, for our kids. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Of course, thank you. Carmen Calderon O'Hara, please, the floor is yours. If you had any thoughts to share with this body?
Sure. Thank you so much, Councillor O'Malley, for having me, Councillor Asabi George for also supporting this proclamation. I'm beyond honored, but mostly humbled, to represent the social workers in the district. As you said, I've been here 25 years as a social worker and school counselor. And last year, I was hired as the director of social work for, to build a department from the ground up. I'm grateful that the mayor and the superintendent are supporting mental health capacity and increasing that capacity. I think, this is definitely not about me. The work that the social workers on the ground are doing is just incredible, particularly under extraordinary circumstances that we're all living through. Every single one of them can tell you stories about the struggles that our students and our families are bringing to the table and how we work together to create an environment where they feel loved and welcome and supported. We have a lot of work to do, particularly as we get our students back into our buildings. It's been incredibly stressful for our students, but parents in particular. And, you know, lastly, I would say, we brought in 57 social workers last year. I'm proud to say that 68% of them identify as a person of color, because we know that our staff has to represent the students and families that we serve. So I'm looking forward to this new hiring season. It's going to be a lot of work to bring in another 85 or so social workers, so I'm sure you'll see me working hard in the hiring process. So, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow night, Councillor Asabi George, to your hearing, and I appreciate your time for bringing us to the table for that. Thank you so, so much, really.
Well, it is we who thank you, Carmen, Christine, just all of your great colleagues, for this vitally important role during these unimaginably difficult times. So thank you very much for your great work, and we celebrate you particularly this week, but every week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of course. So now we are on to the first order of the business, which is the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes, seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Baker, yes. Councillor Bach.
Yes.
Councillor Bach, yes. Councillor Braden.
Yes.
Councillor Braden, yes. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards, yes. Councillor Asabi George.
Yes.
Councillor Asabi George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Mahia.
Yes.
Councillor Mahia, yes. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And Councillor Wu.
Yes.
Councillor Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, the minutes have been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. We will now move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0410 through 0412?
Certainly. 0410, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Martha McNamara, a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, for term expiring on May 1st, 2026. Docket number 0411, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Pamela L. Beal, excuse me, as a member of the Back Bay West Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission, for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. And docket number 0412, message and order for confirmation of the reappointment of Terry North as an alternate member of the Back Bay West Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission, for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 410, 411, and 412 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Next part of the meeting is on the agenda, is reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 413 and 414 together?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0413, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its February 24th, 2021 meeting. Docket 0414, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Henry C. Lutin as Corporation Counsel, effective March 8th, 2021.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Dockets 413 and 414 will be placed on file. Moving on to the next part of the agenda, which is matters recently heard for possible action, would you please read docket 0348?
Thank you. Docket 0348, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $245,900 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Local Cultural Council program awarded by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund the Boston Cultural Council subgrants.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, District Councillor from Dorchester. Councillor Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On March 8th, we had a hearing of the City Council's Committee on Arts, Culture, and Tourism on docket 0348, a message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $245,000 to be dispersed by the local cultural council awarded by the Mass Cultural Council and administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The matter was sponsored to the mayor's office and referred to the Committee on Arts and Culture and Tourism on the, on February 24th. Like I said, we had a hearing on the 8th, and I'd like to thank my colleagues for coming. Councillor Flynn, Councillor Braden, Councillor Bach. We also had a letter written into, read into the record that Councillor Mahia sent. Karen Ortega, from the Chief of Arts and Culture, and Nidia Faria, Director of the Mayor's Office of Arts and Tourism and Special Events, attended the hearing, and their presentation gave us a background on the grants. The grant is coming in from the state. The city matches the grant, and we give it out in small dollar amounts, from 2,500 to 5,000. We're using it as a way to kind of bring these sorts of grants down to a level where our smaller projects and people that maybe haven't had the opportunities at grants will have opportunities. And based on the testimony and the hearing, I'd like to recommend that this matter pass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Baker, as Chair, seeks passage of docket 0348, seeing and hearing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for passage?
Thank you. Docket 0348, Councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Baker, yes. Councillor Bach.
Yes.
Councillor Bach, yes. Councillor Braden.
Yes.
Councillor Braden, yes. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards, yes. Councillor Asabi George.
Yes.
Councillor Asabi George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Janey. Councillor Mahia.
Yes.
Councillor, Councillor Mahia, yes. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And Councillor Wu.
Yes.
Councillor Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, docket number 0348 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please now read docket 0164?
Certainly. Docket 0164, order for hearing to discuss property taxes and assistance programs for seniors and long-term residents facing difficulties during COVID-19.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means and the District Councillor from Beacon Hill. Councillor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We had a really productive working session on March 8th. This is a docket that was introduced by Councillor Flynn, and we had already had a great hearing focusing on the ways in which the recent property tax increases really impact our seniors and folks on fixed incomes, often long-term residents who have held their houses for a long time, but for whom their houses are a home first and foremost and not something they're looking to sell. And the property taxes can make the burden of sort of maintaining that residence really challenging. And we've talked a bunch about the fact that we want to be able to keep Bostonians in that category in the city. And so the working session on Monday, we were joined by my colleagues, in addition to Councillor Flynn and myself, councillors Campbell, Flaherty, Mahia, Arroyo, Wu, and Braden. So I really appreciate the attendance from so many councillors. And by the administration, represented by Emma Handy, our Chief Financial Officer and Collector Treasurer, Commissioner Nicholas Arnello from the Assessing Department, Commissioner Emily Shea from the Age Strong Commission, and then actually, State Representative Fluker Oakley joined us as well, having heard about this and recognizing the need that we'd identified at the last hearing for action at the state level. And then we were lucky to be joined as well by Ms. Edna Prouse from Mass Senior Action Council, and so, as well as Iris Dupont, and had a really productive conversation, sort of looking at several different avenues here, thinking about, you know, all of us wanting to have the city be able to do as much as it could in the immediate to bring relief to people, but recognizing that basically because of that urge, the city's sort of maxed out its state authority to provide exemptions and relief to people as much as were allowed by the state. And so we really need to go back to the state for more opportunity to provide those exemptions and to target them at those people I just mentioned, who we most need to help. And so Councillor Flynn and many of our guests raised a number of possibilities there around tinkering with income limits, the size, level of the senior exemption, the residential exemption, thinking about the opportunity to create new exemptions for folks who are, you know, providing below-market rent to their tenants, for long-term homeowners, like I mentioned. And then we talked a bit with the city staff about the fact that probably things that change the structure of the property tax, like add a classification thing or try to freeze it in place, are going to be a challenge to get through at the State House. But that improvements on these exemption fronts, we might be able to make and get, and really build support through Mass Senior Action and others up at the State House, since many municipalities are seeing the same challenge with real burdens on people during the COVID pandemic, coming from these kind of inflexible rules around property tax. We also acknowledge the fact that the property tax base is obviously what's funding all of our critical city programs in this period. And so, again, you want to target that relief at the folks who need the help most while making sure we keep the city in good financial standing. And we appreciate it as well, a bunch of further information from the Age Strong Commission about the work that they do right now, to make sure that our elders do know about the exemptions that we have in place. But I think everyone agreed the income limits on those are too low. So I think there's a bunch that we can do, and I expect to work with the lead sponsor and others around this sort of transforming into a piece of legislation that'll come before the council. But in the meantime, I would ask to keep this matter in committee, because I think we're going to continue to actively work on it.
Thank you. Councillor Bach, docket 0164 shall remain in committee. Madam Clerk, please read the next docket, 0297.
Thank you. Docket 0297, order for hearing regarding city-level conservation core for Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the Vice Chair of the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks, Councillor Wu. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm pleased to report back from the committee, although I chaired it for five, precisely five minutes while you stepped away for the hearing. The councillors in attendance were, of course, the Chair of this committee and the two sponsors, Councillor Bach and myself, as well as councillors Braden and Baker. Thank you so much for being with us. We heard from experts from the administration, Chief Cook, Ryan Woods of the Commissioner of Parks, John Sullivan from Boston Water and Sewer, Trinh Nguyen from Workforce Development, as well as guests from Philadelphia, who presented about their program, PowerCore Philadelphia, their Executive Director, various incredibly knowledgeable staff members, the operator supervisor from the Philadelphia Water Department, as well as a wonderful presentation from Nguyen Constantini, a graduate student at MIT, who has done a lot of mapping about how this could fit in Boston. So very eager to continue the conversation, and I know that we have many pieces in place now, understanding the, how all of the funding structures and community partnerships in Philadelphia worked. So looking to make sure that this comes together in Boston in terms of finding the budget, building the outreach, organizing the internal city departments, keeping these conversations going. But it was a very exciting hearing, working session, and looking forward to furthering this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion on docket 0297, it shall remain in the Committee on Environment, Resiliency, and Parks. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0143?
Docket 0143, order for hearing regarding Boston Police Department's gang database.
Very much. It now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice and the District Councillor from Mattapan, Councillor Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to Councillor Arroyo for your partnership on this, and thank you to my council colleagues who attended, Councillor Asabi George, Councillor Baker, Councillor Braden, Councillor Flynn, Councillors Flaherty, Bach, Wu, and Mahia. Yesterday, the committee held a two-and-a-half hearing, two-and-a-half-hour hearing on the Boston Police Department's gang database, of course, which is overseen by the BRIC. We had two panels. The first panel included some folks from community-based organizations, including Fatima Ahmad from the Muslim Justice League, Rasan Hall from the ACLU, Elizabeth Badger from the Justice Center of Southeast Massachusetts. And on panel two, we had folks from the administration, Superintendent Charles Wilson, Deputy Superintendent Kenneth Gaines, David Caravan, who oversees the BRIC, and Rufus Falk, from the Mayor's Office of Public Safety. We also received written testimony from various community-based organizations with respect to the BRIC. I also want to thank Emily Lung, who's an immigration attorney with the Justice Center of Southeast Massachusetts, for joining and providing public testimony, as well as Trucia Allah, who's a Director of Reentry with the State's Office of, the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. And in addition to the letters of support, we also had a letter from the mayor as well with respect to this hearing and this issue. The hearing focused on three things. One was transparency and raising awareness for the larger public, and frankly, for all of us on the council, that the database exists. We discussed how a person is added and removed to the gang database, how one's personal information can be requested, and overall, the sentiment that we as a city could do better with respect to transparency with respect to the gang database. We also talked about accountability. When something goes terribly wrong, when someone is wrongfully targeted, stopped, arrested, or even deported as a result of misinformation, how does the city respond? The administration talked about some policy and procedure in some circular that exists in the city, but we were looking forward to more conversation on just how the process actually works for someone who is actually seeking accountability after being listed on the database wrongfully. We talked about racial disparities and the fact that Boston's population is roughly 25% black and 20% Latino and Latinx, yet over 90% of the individuals listed on the Boston Police Department's gang database are black or Latinx. And sadly, that some folks with no criminal record can be added to the database because of a perceived association with an assumed or known gang member. All folks, including those folks who send letters of support, and letters of support in terms of their relationship with the BRIC, agreed that some reforms were necessary, that we as a city had to do better in terms of transparency, accountability, and to definitely have a strategy as to how we respond with eradicating the racial disparities that exist in the gang database and in the department with respect to how we add information to that database, including FIOs, which we all know, based on that data, there are racial disparities there, too. We heard from advocates who detailed how inclusion in the gang database can have serious and harmful consequences, including denial of employment, licenses, a negative impact on bond, parole, someone's parental rights, their immigration status, and of course, a violation of their First Amendment rights. We also heard from the administration that they are making some changes and expect to make some changes, including removing inactive members from the gang database, which is currently close to 4,000 individuals who are listed on that, shifting policies so that one cannot be added to the gang database based solely on FIO, and a commitment to transparency with some anti-reporting. This hasn't happened yet, so the committee will stay in contact. I will also stay in contact with folks at the BRIC and in the administration with respect to honoring these commitments and implementing them, along with continuing to send questions to the BRIC based on some questions that came up yesterday, but unfortunately, we were unable to get to, including around how we share information with ICE and some information that we have in terms of some communications between BRIC and ICE that are troubling and don't necessarily connect or add up with what was shared yesterday, some questions around what we are going to think about in terms of other strategies, in terms of using a gang database, and also the effectiveness of the database. We didn't hear a lot about whether or not the database itself is actually useful in solving crimes, particularly in communities of color. And if it is, what data do we have to make that connection of its value? And the question still remains, if the value of the gang database far outweighs the harm that it can cause, not just to an individual, but to a community, in terms of their rights when being racially profiled or profiled unlawfully by folks in our gang unit, and then, of course, adding information to the gang database that is inaccurate or erroneous. So this is a conversation we will absolutely continue. Tremendous work still to do. I also want to thank Councillor Arroyo for the partnership. And again, thank you to all my council colleagues for showing up. This will remain in committee, and we'll schedule another conversation in the near future in terms of future changes we can continue to push to the BRIC and also to this department in terms of the gang database specifically. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell. Seeing no further discussion, docket 0143 will remain in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, would you please now read docket 216?
Certainly. Docket 0216, ordinance to establish guidelines for permitting residential kitchens.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. She now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations and the District Councillor from East Boston, Councillor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance that will amend the city of Boston's code by allowing for retail residential kitchens, essentially permits to create and bake cottage goods. These are basically shelf-stable goods. The operators of these retail residential kitchens would be required to comply with the state sanitary code and would be subject to permitting and annual inspections by the Health Division of the city's Inspection Services Department. I want to thank the lead sponsor, Councillor Mahia, Councillor Flynn, Councillor Ricardo Arroyo, and Councillor Bach for attending the working session. We heard again testimony from Andre Antesari, Manisha Sethi, Irene Nakabonj, excuse me, sorry about that, Commissioner Irish, Chief English, Dan Pendragas, from the Health Inspector from ISD, Brian Glasscock from the BPDA, and Natalia Ortubé from the Director of Small Business. We essentially followed up on a lot of the questions that we had about the original, about the proposed ordinance, specifically on the landlord-tenant dynamics. We also discussed the conditional use permit and when it would be necessary versus when it's just simply allowed. And the trigger point is if they're going to have direct consumer sales from the apartment or the building to somebody, you would need a conditional use. But if it's just going to a farmer's market, you would not. But if it's just going to a farmer's market, you would not. We discussed hiring more inspectors and specifically also discussed making sure that we provide them with wraparound services to know how to keep their kitchen safe, whether that's additional fire extinguishers or other matters, but also whatever training we felt was necessary in TA. So, I thought it was a very robust conversation. We did not discuss in detail, but we made it very clear that there is a pending zoning amendment, which Counselar Meha will be talking about shortly. So, we wanted to make sure that we were conscious of the fact that there's many, there's other legislation pending that could actually make some parts of this obsolete. Ultimately, it was a great conversation, and I ask that this particular ordinance stay in committee and that when we go to discuss the following amendment, that the two be combined. So, thank you so much for this opportunity to discuss this matter.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Docket 0216 shall remain in the Committee on Government Operations. We are now moving to the motions, orders, and resolutions portion of our meeting. To begin, Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record and place before the body docket 0415?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0415, Counselar Mejia offered the following order regarding a text amendment for the Boston zoning code to add retail residential kitchens as an accessory home occupation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Dorchester, Counselor Mejia. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice President, and thank you again to Counselor Edwards for all of her support and hard work on getting us to this point. We filed this text amendment to address a critical component of the retail residential kitchens ordinance that needed to be changed in our zoning code. During our hearing on retail kitchens, we learned that applicants would need to go through the ZBA in order to begin operations in their homes. This would create a lot of red tape and bureaucracy that would likely turn people away from wanting to apply in the first place. The text amendment simply adds one single clause to Section 2A of the zoning code that explicitly states that retail residential kitchens are included in the quote-unquote accessory home occupation, definitions. By adding this to the definition, we address concerns around fire safety and traffic because the existing definition states that products may be on-site, cannot be sold on-site. We see this text amendment as an amendment to the original ordinance that we filed, given that it was written to address the concerns brought up in our first hearing and addressed in our working session yesterday. We hope to see it pass quickly so that we can allow entrepreneurs across the city to get to work and start earning money. And I also wanted to give Counselor Bach a shout-out. I really do appreciate her insight and leadership and guidance on this effort. And so, thank you so very much, Counselor Bach, for helping us kind of understand this a little bit further. And again, to Counselor Edwards for always bringing it to the floor. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Is there any further discussion on docket 0415? Seeing hearing none, would any counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Braden, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flaherty. Please add the Chair's name as well. And docket 415 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read and place before the body docket 416.
Thank you. Docket 0416, Counselor Wu offered the following order for hearing regarding inclusion of daycare facility zoning restrictions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Rosendale. Counselor Wu, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First, I'd like to move to add Counselor Liz Braden as an original cosponsor on this.
She is, yeah, so added. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Since 1989, Boston zoning code has included IDF, Inclusion of Daycare Facilities, regulations, requiring that buildings above a certain size threshold either have to set aside space for an onsite early education facility or contribute to the creation of such facilities off-site. These regulations are in place in a very complicated zoning code in about 15 districts, mostly in Boston's downtown area, but they haven't been consistently enforced by the BPDA, and we don't have a ton of transparency about how much exactly has been created or funded through the linkage side of the program. We don't have a specific designated fund for developer contributions, and so it's really almost an ad hoc basis of how this is evaluated, if at all. The neighborhoods included in the zoning regulations also don't extend to some of the most developed downtown neighborhoods in Boston, such as the South Boston waterfront. And so, besides extending the geographic coverage of these regulations, we want to consider altering the program to build more early education programs in the most underserved neighborhoods with a high proportion of Boston's young children, particularly as families are in some industries shifting more towards remote work, which may continue even after and through the recovery. And so, looking forward to having this conversation about a specific tool within a city's toolbox to make sure that we are taking down barriers and increasing access to very much-needed early education and care. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Brighton, Counselor Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to Counselor Wu for including me on this as original cosponsor on this important hearing. Well before COVID hit, we saw an exacerbation in a crisis with regard to accessible and affordable childcare and daycare facilities across our city. One of the, my maiden speech last year was about housing for families. This year, we had a hearing on the crisis in daycare. And I feel that unless we really push developers to take into account the needs of families, then they will not, they will not take proactive action to provide daycare. We have all sorts of amenities in our new housing, new developments, state-of-the-art exercise rooms, roof decks, everything, but we need to be very intentional in asking and demanding that we have, see childcare facilities in so much of the new housing and new development in our city. So, I'm very proud to cosponsor this and look forward to the discussion on how we might leverage this zoning code to try and make sure that we make adequate provisions for the childcare needs in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Is there any further discussion on docket 416? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor to 416? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair's name as well. Docket 0416 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, please read docket 417 and place it before our body.
Thank you. Docket 0417, Counselor Campbell offered the following order for hearing regarding inaccuracies in analyzed Boston's crime incident report data set.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Matta Pan, Counselor Campbell. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This hearing order is pretty straightforward in that it is to discuss analyzed Boston's public data set of the police department's crime incident reports. I want to thank my partners in the work, Citizens for Juvenile Justice, who I've had the pleasure of working with for a long time. They recently sent some information after analyzing many of the data sets that raised some concerns. One, that some of the data was duplicative, and there wasn't an explanation as to why that has, why that's the case. There were also some troubling information in there in that some of the incident reports, or numbers of incidents reports went up. So, for example, in the 2020 data set assessed on January 2021, there were 29,194 unique incidents, but by comparison, there were close to 91,000 unique incidents in the data sets on February 25, 2021, just a month later. And so, it's clearly demonstrating that there's some weird trends going here or some fluctuation in the data that's quite unreliable. And in addition, the police department changed its characterization of incidents for the year 2020, including the removal and consolidation of a substantial amount of offense descriptions into very ambiguous categories, which can obscure the police department's activity and make it difficult to effectively and accurately analyze, which is important to folks who want to look at trends and to really develop solutions on how you respond to incidents of violence in a more effective and impactful way. Lastly, there were many offense descriptions that were inexplicably renamed in 2020, such as harassment to harassment slash criminal harassment, without an opportunity for the public to weigh in or to have a conversation about why these changes were made. So, the hearing is designed, one, to talk about the data, to get some questions answered, but also to allow the public and some of these organizations that do research and analyze the data to have an opportunity to be able to get an explanation from the department why some changes were made, if that was, if there were good changes or if we should think about doing something different. This is a space, hopefully, that will create an opportunity for folks to weigh in in a public manner. So, I'm looking forward to the hearing. We know that the data that we release is critically important to actually solve incidents of violence, to reduce it, but most importantly, to develop a strategy that will actually work. So, looking forward to the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Any further discussion on docket 417? Fantastic. Would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor to docket 417? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, Counselor Braden, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair's name as well. And docket 417 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, would you please place before the body docket 418?
Certainly. Docket 0418, Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for hearing to discuss off-leash dog recreation spaces in the City of Boston.
Madam Clerk, the Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park, Counselor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. My dogs seem to have heard that I'm speaking on this now. And so, the goal of this hearing is to discuss dog parks, off-leash dog parks in the City of Boston. Right now, there's seven city-owned dog parks in the City of Boston. There's three in Dorchester, one in North End, one in downtown, one in the South End, and one in South Boston. The downtown Boston is located and managed with the Friends of the Public Garden, and the South Boston location is managed by Private of Butter. The city's also working on a new dog park in Alston. There are several privately-owned or state-owned facilities, which are located in South Boston, North End, Jamaica Plain, and Alston, but the current distribution of these parks and their planned additions of parks leave many neighborhoods with no parks or easy access to these parks. That includes West Roxbury, Rosendale, Hyde Park, Matta Pan, three of the neighborhoods which I represent, but also Roxbury and Brighton do not directly have a park, though they have some nearby. And so, I know that this is something that the city has expressed interest in promoting. Obviously, we want healthy, safe spaces for pets, but also what I have found in my time visiting dog parks in the city is that it does create community. It's a great tool for bringing communities closer together. It also helps take care of other things that we get many calls about, which is the, certainly I do as a counselor in the southwest part of Boston, where we receive calls all the time about dogs off-leash in human parks and in parks where that's not meant to be the case. But because we don't have these off-leash dog parks, that tends to be the workaround. And so, this is a way to address several things at once, but also ensure that all of our neighborhoods are receiving the same kinds of services and that all our pet owners in all of our neighborhoods are receiving the same kind of access to these services. So, I look forward to this, hearing this, and I look forward to hearing plans to bring these parks to the entire city as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on docket 418? And if there's discussion, please raise your blue hand. If you just want to add your name, you can just raise your physical hand, seeing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Braden, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Campbell. Please add the Chair's name as well. Docket 418 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Madam Clerk, please place before the body docket 419.
Docket 0419, Counselor Braden offered the following resolution designating March as Women's History Month and March 8th as International Women's Day.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Brighton, Counselor Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, I'm pleased to offer this resolution recognizing the month of March as Women's History Month, and also yesterday, on Monday, we celebrated International Women's Day. Women's History Month is an important opportunity to shine a light on the extraordinary contributions and legacy of all women and girls who have built, shaped, and improved our city, our Commonwealth, and our nation, and also internationally, the impact that women leaders have had and women across the world have had. International Women's Day has its roots in the labor movement and recognize women workers organizing for better working conditions and fair treatment. The empowerment of all working women in their homes, their workplaces, and in their communities is inextricably linked to generating equitable economic status, sustainable democracy, and an inclusive security. In our present current public health crisis, women continue to lead, from vaccine researchers to public health officials, to countless heroines in the front lines, women are working around the clock to help defeat COVID-19. Women, and particularly women of color, also make up the majority of our essential workers, including educators, daycare providers, grocery store workers, and others who are keeping our families, our communities, and our city safe and running. Far too often, their efforts and their stories have gone untold and underreported, especially those of Black and Brown women, immigrant women, transgender women, and others from diverse communities who have strengthened our city and our communities across every generation. LGBTQIAIAI women around the world face intersecting forms of discrimination, and although we have made progress, LGBTQIA+ women will still face a disproportionate amount of gender-based violence, legal discrimination, and social inequality. We have a long way to go in continuing the efforts for gender equality, parity, and justice, but we must also remember to celebrate the accomplishments and victories along the way. That gives us, puts some juice in the tank to keep us going, when we remember the cheros of yesteryear as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Braden. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from South Boston, Counselor Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice President. I also, please sign my name, add my name to that. Thank you to Counselor Braden for that important resolution. I also want to highlight the work of dedication, sacrifice, and service of woman veterans as we celebrate March as Woman Month. I also wanted to highlight the incredible sacrifices of woman veterans. I know myself and Counselor Edwards will soon have a hearing on it, but we want to make sure that women veterans receive the same respect and dignity following their service as male veterans, and that includes equal access, full access, to all VA medical care, gender-specific as well. So, women veterans have played a critical role in our society, and they don't get the recognition that they deserve. So, we wanted to highlight them, but also advocate for them as well. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Flynn. Seeing no further discussion on docket 419, would any counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Sabi George, please add Counselor Baker, please add Counselor Edwards, please add Counselor Bach, please add Counselor Wu, please add Counselor Mejia, please add Counselor Flaherty, please add Counselor Campbell, I assume, and please add the Chair. Before we do the roll call, Counselor Braden, did you have a further comment to make? Please proceed, but you are muted.
I omitted to request suspension of Rule 33 and adoption of this resolution, but I think you're, I think you're on top of that, so thank you.
I appreciate that. Counselor Braden moves for the suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0419. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0419 for adoption. Counselor Counselor Arroyo.
Yes, and if you can please add my name.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Savi George.
Yes.
Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, docket number 0419 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. And thank you for your leadership there, Counselor Braden. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 420?
Certainly. Docket 0420, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Mejia.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 420. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. First personnel matter, docket 0420, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Sorry, yeah.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Savi George.
Yes.
Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, docket number 0420 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving along to docket 0421.
Thank you. Docket 0421, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Bach.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 421. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yeah.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Savi George.
Yes.
Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, docket 421 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to docket 422.
Docket 0422, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Savi George.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 422. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0422, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Savi George.
Yes.
Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's okay. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Mr. Vice President, docket number 0422 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to late files. I am informed by Clerk Feeny that there are two late file matters. They are currently being sent in everyone's email, so please check accordingly. And right now, we are simply taking a roll call vote to add these items to the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to add these two items to our agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President, are they personnel in nature or are they substantive?
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. One is a communication from the council president, and the other is a resolution from a colleague.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Is that Counselor Baker?
Yes, and I'm a yes.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Savi George.
Yes.
Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu. The late files are now promptly before the body, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. First late file matter, as mentioned, is a letter from Council President Janey. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the letter into the record?
Certainly. Kim Janey, Boston City Council President, District 7, March 10, 2021. Dear Madam Clerk, I regretfully cannot attend and chair the March 10 council meeting due to previously scheduled mayoral transition obligation. Vice President O'Malley will preside over the council meeting, and my staff will be in attendance to take notes. Kindly read this letter into the record. Thank you sincerely, Kim Janey, Boston City Council President, District 7.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. This matter will be placed on file. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the second late file into the record?
Thank you. First and last, Mr. Vice President.
Oh, yes, please. The first and last clause, thank you.
Thank you. Offered by Counselor Ed Flynn in the City Council, resolution supporting Boston VNA care, healthcare professionals. Whereas Boston VNA, BVNA, is a certified home health agency that provides nursing care, therapies, rehabilitation, and other home health services to patients in Boston. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council supports our BVNA healthcare professionals in their negotiations for their first-ever union contract and urges the BVNA management to negotiate in good faith and to sign off on a contract that reflects the value of the critical work that our BVNA workers perform in our communities. This was filed on March 10.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the district counselor from South Boston, the South End in Chinatown, as well as Bay Village. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. May I suspend Rule 12 and add counselors Edwards and Braden as original cosponsors?
Seeing and hearing, no objections. Rule 12 is hereby suspended, and counselors Edwards and Braden are listed as original cosponsors. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And before I speak, I want to apologize to my colleagues for this late file. I know their time is precious, so again, I want to apologize. Boston VNA healthcare professionals are currently close to securing their first-ever union contract. However, their efforts have been obstructed by the management delay in bargaining. To give a bit of a background information on this, Boston VNA is a certified home health agency, provides nursing care, therapists, rehabilitation, and other home healthcare services to patients. The healthcare workers serve patients in Boston and throughout greater Boston and play a critical part in the delivery of medical care, especially as patients recovering from COVID-19 and other illnesses are often dependent on home healthcare. Many seniors rely on home healthcare. However, despite this work, BVNA management is proposing to cut sick leave benefits for new workers, refusing to give healthcare workers the same bereavement leave benefits that are available to other unionized nurse colleagues. This resolution will send our support to Boston VNA healthcare workers as they negotiate their contract and urge BVNA management to treat these workers with respect and dignity because they have earned it. I hope that we can suspend and pass this resolution today so that we can send our support to these critical healthcare workers in Boston and throughout greater Boston as well. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The chair now recognizes the district counselor from East Boston, Counselor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. This is another time where we, as a body, need to stand by people who are standing up for themselves. I'm so proud of these workers. It's a brave move to say that we too deserve to be organized, to have a voice, and to fight for our rights. And anytime that happens, this body needs to be right there with those workers. We have learned what it means to be a home health worker in this time, in this pandemic. And if at anything, we have learned how essential they are to our own independence, to our elderly having dignified, good lives. And so their ability to be able to make a living wage, to be respected, and to have time with their own families allows for us, as our population ages, as we have members in our families who have disabilities, to be able to have dignified, good, working, work-life balance as well. So we stand by those who stand for some of our most vulnerable individuals. This is hard work. To come into someone's home and to care for people while their family members are working is extremely hard. I respect that work. My mother did that work when she retired from the military. I stand by those workers. I've stood by them when organizing domestic workers and also standing by those workers of 1199. The fact of the matter is, this is the work. Care work is the work that makes all other work possible. Investing in those workers is a true investment in our economy and our ability, not only as women but as men, to be able to participate in it. So I am so excited to sign on to this. I am so excited to stand with those workers. Kudos to them. You are brave, and we are with you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. The chair now recognizes the district counselor from Brighton. Counselor Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you to Counselor Flynn for bringing forward this really important resolution in support of the Boston VNA workers. I'm a physical therapist by profession. I came to Boston in '95, and I did have a stint working in home care in Boston. And I really want to stand in solidarity with all of the workers at Boston VNA who are delivering essential care to many of our most vulnerable residents in this difficult time. You know, even in our own family, we have had to use the services of VNA healthcare workers during COVID. It's an incredibly challenging time, and they have delivered their care with professionalism and dedication, and it's just truly inspiring. It is astounding to me that this is the first contract that's been negotiated It is astounding to me that this is the first contract that's been negotiated, and that the management is sort of dragging their feet in terms of recognizing the essential work that these workers are doing, and I want to stand in solidarity with these healthcare workers and urge their management to work in good faith and sign a contract that recognizes the truly invaluable services that these workers provide. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Brayden. Would any counselors wish to just add their voice to this discussion, any discussion? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Campbell, careful there. Please add the chair's name as well. And Counselors Flynn, Edwards, and Brayden move for suspension of the rules and adoption of this late-file matter. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. The second late-file resolution offered by Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Brayden.
Yes.
Counsel Brayden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, this resolution has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Counselors Flynn, Edwards, and Brayden. We are now moving on to the green sheets. Would any member wish to remove a matter from the green sheets, seeing and hearing no takers? We will now move to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. I now move for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. For the consent agenda, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Brayden.
Yes.
Counsel Brayden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, the consent agenda has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to announcements. Do any counselors have any announcements to share? The Chair first recognizes the at-large Counsel from South Boston, Counsel Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple matters, just a really brief announcement. I'm happy to announce that Ed Kelly, Edzo Kelly, was elected as the International Association of Firefighters President last week, which is a very big deal.
Perfect.
Ed previously served as the IAAF's General Secretary Treasurer and also had been the president of both Local 718 here in Boston, of course, and also the Massachusetts Professional Firefighters Union, known as PFFM. Born and raised in Dorchester, comes from a family of firefighters. He went to Don Savio, served in the military in the Air Force, and rose through the ranks and is currently in the role that he's in today. So, Ed is a dear friend of mine in my family's. I know that he's a dear friend to many of us here, and he'll be a great president that will work hard to fight for the needs of firefighters across our country. So, just want to give a congratulations to Ed Kelly on behalf of the entire Boston City Council, as well as the clerk, as he starts his latest role in looking out for the interest of firefighters and their families. So, well done to Edzo Kelly. And also, an announcement, as you recall, Mr. Chair, we had adjourned last week to recognize Sister Evelyn Hurley for her 106th birthday. Want to let folks know that on Saturday, the day before her birthday, Sister Evelyn had suffered a stroke and went to the doctors after they had tried some medicines to dissolve the stroke, and she had the option, which was done to go pretty complicated and delicate surgery, which had significant risks, and her exact words were to the doctor that her work is not finished on this earth, and so to do the very best that he can so that she has the ability to walk and talk and continue her mission. Well, want to report that she underwent surgery the day before her birthday, and she will be released from the hospital this afternoon, and she did remarkable surgery. It went well. They were able to relieve and remove the clot. She's walking and talking and looking forward to, one, getting back to the motherhouse, but also to be praying for all of us. So, I just want to let everyone know that she's doing well, and she's also, to keep her in your prayers as well, as she continues with her recovery. But, got to tell you, she's an absolute champ to undergo that type of surgery at 106 and to pull through. They did have a birthday celebration for her bedside in the intensive care unit, so for the great doctors and nurses and healthcare staff that cared for Sister Evelyn and brought her back to good health, we want to thank you on behalf of all Bostonians, but particularly the Boston City Council. So, keep her in your prayers, and just want to give everyone a report. And I did reiterate to extend that invitation for her to visit us on our 107th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Here, here. Thank you very much, and then thank you for sharing that wonderful news, Counsel Flaherty. Chair now calls the at-large Counselor from Dorchester, Counselor Asabi George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that last week, Kamani James resigned from his position as student member of the school committee, and several students also resigned from their BSAC positions. Their reasons for doing so are varied. However, the root of their concerns is a real power imbalance that they are experiencing and felt that they were enduring on a daily basis. How we should show our students that we respect them, take them seriously, and ensure that they have the educational opportunities they deserve matters. It's clear to me that these students, by resigning from their positions, felt that they were out of options, and that deeply saddens me. We want our students engaged in their schoolwork, in their communities, in making their schools better, and in our city. We are stronger when we listen to them. We are stronger when students have a meaningful say in how we meet their needs. BPS is launching an independent investigation into what happened and some of the more worrying allegations. As you all know, expanding the number of licensed mental health professionals in our schools is one of my top priorities. It's why we're having a hearing on it tomorrow. In addition to everything else, it's clear that mental health supports were not in place or what was in place was inappropriate. To this body and to the people of Boston, I believe in our capacity to get through this time and to examine the structure that led to this situation. I know that the allegations will be thoroughly investigated, and I hope that we will not